Crash. They don't give a cycle.
Yeah.
They go different.
So have the good old boys made the all the arrangements for our meetings?
One can't make my phone.
You got a login?
No.
Good evening, a call to order. The May meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, first of all, roll call vote.
Sir.
Not a vote, a roll call.
Berg.
Here.
Kleski.
Here.
Jacobitz.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Berthold.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our April meeting. Everybody had a copy in their packet. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Well, Jerry has a correction.
I, I would note this board member Berg's name is not properly capitalized nor spelled. Two hours minutes and so moved to correct those.
Still noted. Duly noted.
And with that. Uh, like here.
This is small.
And with that correction, I would move to approve the minutes as correct.
Okay. We have support on that?
Support.
Okay, just simply voice vote all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is new business. It deals with uh, 146 South Charles Street, a dimensional sign variance. I'm sure we have someone to speak on that if you'd like to come up and, and give us just a brief description on what it is you're asking to do and what it is. If you can't meet the bar, the requirements.
Yep, thank you very much. Uh, Frank Rebar, Vice President for Enrollment and Student Affairs at Adrian College. Yeah, I'm, yes, I'm here to speak on a variance for signage on the dome structure. Uh, that's being erected. Uh, you have depictions, added some additional depictions of that. I have a couple here that are extra if anyone wants to see them. Yes, we're asking for, I think the, the ordinance itself, uh, it allows for 300 square feet. Uh, on a building, uh, we are asking for a variance for three, uh, 1300 square feet for a uh, total sign measurement of 1600 square feet per sign. There are two signs, one on the west side of the structure, one on the south side of the structure facing in toward campus. South side or the west side of the structure facing uh, 223. Uh, about 300 feet from the center of 223. Uh, we're asking for this variance, uh, recognizing the, the sign ordinance doesn't have a classification for a structure such as this, a dome, if you will. And we recognize a couple pieces that uh, one, in terms of the scale of the structure, uh, and the scale of the signage. We believe this is appropriate scaling to the scale of the structure. Uh, in terms of total square foot of the exterior of the structure. Uh, this represents 1% um, of, of that structure per sign, 1% uh, of the total structure. Uh, we feel certainly that's within scale. You have depictions um, in front of you, so you can, you can make your judgment there. Uh, one other piece that's uh, important to us is that the, the formal address for this structure is 146 South Charles Street. And I did provide some mapping. It's, it's, it's literally uh, about a 30 acre parcel that's identified with that same address. Uh, and so certainly we are hoping to uh, distinguish buildings from each other uh, for, for obvious purposes. The other piece that is important to us in terms of that address and wayfinding is our attempt to take in the concerns of uh, the city, the, the neighborhoods surrounding this structure that we orient and, and develop every way we can as a college to develop traffic finding, wayfinding to what we believe is, wh- what is the west side and this, the singular public entrance to this property. Uh, so that vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic is organized and oriented to the 223 side. Crehan Lane is the formal name of that drive that goes from the entrance of 146 South Charles, the front of the Merrillat Center through can't, through the, that parking lot and down Crehan Lane. So those are the, the primary rationale for our request. Certainly scaling is, is probably the uh, you know, the most obvious, but certainly uh, as, as suggested, we also want to orient traffic and, and pedestrian traffic to the appropriate entrance as opposed to winding their ways through the neighborhood, et cetera.
Thank you, we may have more questions later, but we'll get back with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure people, people in the audience, you have a copy of these to see? Do you have a couple copies they could pass around there?
I sure can. I do and I can.
I've got a couple here. Okay.
That's fine. We got enough.
There you can have this one.
Frank, before, before you sit down, what is the primary entrance then to this part? Where would people that were coming to this facility enter that part of campus?
They will enter that Merrillat parking lot. We call it the Merrillat parking lot. It's 146 South Charles.
Okay, Merrillat parking lot and then off to the, to the south, south, south of the football stadium.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and then around the west.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, we do hold public hearings uh, on issues like this and commissioners tonight, we're going to do the public hearing before we do our commissioner question.
Yeah.
So if we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this, uh, welcome to hear from you. Remember, uh, we are dealing with a sign variance and that's what we're dealing with tonight. So any discussion we have, any comments you have, uh, we would like them related to the sign variance request. So at this time, is there anyone who would like to speak? If so, please step up, give us your name and tell us what you'd like to say. I'm reminded, we do have a three minute time limit on that. Thank you.
My name is Tim Hall, South City of Adrian resident. Good evening, Chairman Berthold and Zoning Board members. I'm here tonight to address case 2511, the dimensional sign variance being requested by Adrian College Administration. My wife Susan and I live at 175 Canterbury Street, which is in the Adrian College neighborhood. One street removed from the athletic dome that is nearing completion. The sign variance request that you are deciding tonight is not for one sign, but for two. Per the request, the size of each sign will be 40 feet by 40 feet. 1600 square feet combined 3200 square feet. The city sign ordinance allows for a sign to be 300 square feet. So the requested size is over 10 times the allowable square footage. For comparison, the average Michigan highway billboard is 14 feet by 48 feet. 672 square feet. Colleges requesting the equivalent of almost five highway billboards be installed. Per Webster's dictionary, a sign refers to a visual display that conveys information, instructions or warnings. If you travel on US 223 from the Adrian College arch to the baseball field, there are already 11 signs that say Adrian College. Some are clearly over 300 square feet where variance is granted. I and many others believe that 11 signs in less than half a mile that say Adrian College are enough. The residents and visitors to the area don't need roughly five billboards added to the neighborhood. Zoning standards and ordinances exist for many reasons. I hope that you vote tonight to preserve what little of the character, safety and visual harmony are left in the west, our west side neighborhood. A 90 foot tall, 150,000 square foot athletic dome was allowed to be built due to the lack of a building height restriction and ERO zoning. If the dome needs a sign, there is a 5,000 square foot building anchoring it. Appropriately sized signage can go on it. We have a sign ordinance restriction of 300 square feet. I'm asking that you enforce it and deny this variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else wish to speak?
Sue Walz House, City of Adrian. Just condensed into a really short little thing. I just feel in piggybacking my husband's um, talk is, it's just, this request would just add to the visual clutter that exists between the football stadium and the baseball field of signage. If you look up visual clutter, it refers to an overwhelming or distracting accumulation of visual elements in a space. Please consider denying this request in the entrance, interest of maintaining the appearance of our neighborhood and community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Bakewell. I live at 5001 Canterbury. Uh, the dome is 100 feet from my backyard. It's going to change, the dome itself is going to change our whole neighborhood. There are only 12 houses, I think, that are going to be incredibly affected. But I really think this needs to be denied. I don't, it's bad enough that I'm not going to be able to see anything from my backyard. No breeze in the summertime, just this monstrosity uh, that they slipped through because of a hole in the ERO. I really would like you to deny this. It's time that the city had some backbone and stood up to Adrian College for once. You know, our neighborhood has been kicked around by Adrian College for so many years. It's time to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Jill Bakewell. I live at 1501 Canterbury Street um, in Adrian. Like my husband said, the dome is almost in our backyard. I feel like we have been disrespected by Adrian College, disrespected by the city because this was allowed to be allowed to happen. And I know there was a loophole in the, in the zoning, but um, I just feel like putting the, the logos on, you know, that size on the dome is totally unnecessary. I walked in late. I don't know what the reasoning is um, for, that they have to be that big because like Tim said, Tim Hall's house said, there's all these signs going down 223 anyways. Anybody driving down 223 is gonna know that that's Adrian College property. You know, regardless if the dome was there or not. So I'm, I'm requesting that this request be denied. I just feel like to our neighborhood, to the, especially the people whose, whose yards back up to the dome, this is, this is like another slap in the face. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the audience?
Good evening, excuse me, Jim Berryman, 676 Stonecrest in Adrian. And for transparency, uh, I am on the Board of Trustees at Adrian College, but I am not here representing the Board of Trustees. They have, I'm representing myself, but wanted to make sure that you knew that I was a trustee. I'm here in support of the variance. I attended Adrian College a long time ago, 1965 to 1969. When, when I attended Adrian College, this was a completely different atmosphere. There was industry throughout Adrian and throughout Lenawee County. Very honestly, the community could have cared less whether the students were there or not. And that was okay. We had a great time, everything worked out well. But those industries are gone, most of them. And they're not coming back. But Adrian College and Sienna Heights have stepped up and they are helping the economy of the City of Adrian. Adrian College is stronger today than it's ever been. They bring people to Adrian. Dr. Frank Rebar and his staff in, in an economy that is so tough to recruit kids in smaller high school classes that are coming out of, in, in graduating, coming to college. And they are doing a tremendous job of not only recruiting students, but importantly retaining students. 72% of the students that go to Adrian College are in one form or another in athletics.
Can we specify with the sign, please?
I think I'm sticking, sticking to the sign. That, that is, that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So why do we need a sign? Is your argument simply that they deserve it? Or is there a rationale?
There is a rationale, there's an economic rationale behind what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get across to you. What Adrian College has been able to do economically in the City of Adrian is not only bring students here, but their parents and, and, and other activities that never came to Adrian before. With this facility and having the, the identification on that facility, not only will it help attract students to come to Adrian, it will help to retain those students. And you can ask any restaurant, any fast food, the hotel. Because people are coming to the City of Adrian, they see that dome, they see the arch. They know that they are in Adrian, Michigan and at Adrian College. Economically, I'm here and I think that those signs need to be on that dome. And with great pride that Adrian is proud of Adrian College and what you do for this city and, and the economic advantage that we've lost with industry. But Adrian College has helped maintain that loss of, of economy from industry. I, I, I know, but I was watching the others too and I was watching my clock. So I, I will just say that yes, I am here in the support economically for the City of Adrian. I think the City of Adrian needs the strength of this facility at Adrian. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Trudy McSorley, I live at 244 Renford Court is my neighborhood. And um, I'm here clearly because of uh, the signage is just the capstone of all of this that's been happening to our neighborhood. It's um, what more else does, does it need? We, if that edifice, it does not speak for itself and all the other signs. I clearly have to say that we just don't need one more piece of salt in the wound of having this, this dome in the neighborhood and the sign, I mean, who needs a sign? It's there, right? Who needs the sign? And why do we have to? Why do we have to have a variance for something that is already? Can't we stand by something? We say this is what our, it's our protocol, this is our policy. And why, why is it that the policy has to be put aside constantly? We weren't supposed to have anything over, I forgot how many feet, Tim, was it? How about, tell me how, I can't see. 300 feet, it's 900 feet. You know, so I'm talking about the building itself. I'm talking about the building. So we keep adding variance upon variance upon variance upon. What do we stand for? What policies are we going to stand for? And I ask you to please consider that. Consider not just, not just the, the denial of the, the varying, that variance, but also the respect for the neighborhood that has been just decimated, torn apart by this, what's been happening in the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Ask away. We try to be friendly.
No, 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 no. You need to address us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why is, why is it that you follow and the dome has to be so big? What's wrong with the 300?
We will be dealing with that when we get to our questions and our, our discussion. Okay. Anyone else in the audience to speak? Do we have anyone online that wishes to speak? Okay, hearing none, I'm calling a close to the public hearing. And commissioners, uh, your questions?
I have a question. If I'm reading this, the ordinance right on page 267.
I'd speak your mic to the corner.
I thought I was.
Okay.
One of these is a primary wall and the other one is a secondary, which can only have 150 feet. Is that correct? And which is which?
I can double check.
Prime principle and secondary walls.
Yeah, that is correct.
It's 3030. The, a chart. I realize that neither one of these spaces is the address or is the approach?
So they have multiple street frontages, so that's why there'd be two. If you, if you technically take the parcel, there's, you're allowed the same amount up to four signs per street level. Buildings with multiple street frontages, so we permitted signs of the same type on each frontage.
What are the frontages?
Supposed to be 223 and then.
It's a frontage even though there's no access?
It's technically, I guess.
Okay.
You guys decide, I suppose.
Brendan Charles certainly doesn't front on one east street.
No.
Nor Michigan Avenue.
Look. Charles and 220.
I would say it was two frontages, Charles and 223.
And that's where these are? One of the, this is 223 and this is Charles? It's not.
Well, no, the one, the one on the smaller side would be facing 223.
That's 223 and then what's this space?
I'm not sure it's facing anything other than the south.
Okay.
But I think the idea was, I'm just guessing that the idea was if they put it on the Charles Street side, it's facing directly into the neighborhood.
Right.
And there's no traffic there that's looking for that sign. I'm just guessing now.
So the long side faces into the, of the other athletic fields?
Correct, it faces south. But south, it, it doesn't exactly run north and east and west, but it's a little bit north, northwest.
So it's for people on the campus, on the athletic fields, looking at the dome to know whose dome it is?
My thinking based on looking at the drawings here is that the way this dome is going to be located, that would be the side you would see if you're driving north on 223.
Precisely.
The other side, the other one, you would notice if you're driving south on 223. Because the building is actually a little bit of an angle there, going to be at an angle.
Okay.
So yes, it does face the other lake fields, but it also faces 223 for northbound traffic. Frank, you can.
That's, that's precisely the explanation in terms of the placement of the two signs. With regard to primary wall, secondary wall, that's precisely the, the rationale for a variance request that, this is a air structure, so there's really not defined walls per se. But responding to, uh, for us to respond to the variance, we were taking this under the guidance of.
Right. So when people drive in from whatever that street is by County Market, Stratford, they're not seeing one of them.
That's correct. In, in fact, we're closing the entrance that currently sits at the dead end of Stratford for that purpose of directing or encouraging traffic to, to the, the front, if you will.
In any way, they're just identifying.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
In, in that regard, yes.
All right.
Commissioners, other questions?
I have a question. It's really not a sign then, it's just the logo. There's nothing else on there except the logo with the bulldog and Adrian College, correct?
That's correct.
And is that adhered to the structure or is it grommeted on? How is that attached?
It's, yeah, great question. It's, that's why I gave you probably confusing the, the last page of those, of those photos. Certainly isn't this particular structure, but it gives you a sense, at least to the best of that the picture will allow as to how it's, it's, it's hung with a grommet structure. Yes. So it's not printed on the structure itself. It's, it, it's an independent piece that's hung on that structure. But there are no borders, so uh, it's, it's simply the logo, the, the college athletic logo that's depicted there.
Is the sign going to be illuminated anyway?
No.
Commissioners, questions?
Uh, question on the, the actual building, not the dome. Is there going to be a sign on that as well?
On the building?
On the front of the building. It appears that there is.
Right here.
Right?
Yes.
And.
Going to be signage there as well.
And what is on the building?
Family.
I believe it's Sweeby Family.
It's going to say Adrian College in there somewhere though.
Not on that particular piece, but it.
But it's going to be on the campus.
So you're. My question is, in addition to the variance, there is other signage that's going to be on the structure.
So that has not been applied for yet, so I don't know of that. But it would be above and beyond.
The banner.
Okay, regardless.
Yes.
Okay.
My other question to Mr. K down there. Has there been any other attempts to talk about signage at Adrian College as far as our um, zoning is concerned? There's, there's tremendous amount of signage and Adrian College tennis right now draws my attention because it's way beyond 300 square feet.
Yeah, so tho- those were prior to me. I didn't sign on those. I don't see any permits for those, so I.
Okay, and the sign on the football stadium as you're going north on 223 is also in violation of our sign ordinance. Where it says Adrian College and has a bulldog underneath as you're going north on 223. Nothing has been.
So I could not speak on that, but.
They never.
That may have been part of the site plan, I'm only speaking hypothetically, may have been part of the site plan and it was.
Thank you.
Accidentally perhaps, only speaking hypothetically, I was not here.
Thank you.
If, if I may, those, we have, the college has consulted the city on all of those signage, those wind screens as well.
Well, on the football field, it is not a screen.
On, on the, I presume you're talking about like the back of the scoreboard there? Yeah, that was also. Yeah, that was also discussed with the city of Adrian and was approved. Not through, not through the zoning board of the field, but.
At administrative level.
Correct.
It did not come to the, this, this zoning board.
Correct.
Commissioners, other questions?
You know, my, my question would be, uh, you know, I was going to wait until we did the findings of fact on this, but my question is more, you know, I kind of understand, I, in fact, I've been in favor of sign variances in the past, although rarely, where it was the, the sign kind of proportion on the building. But I'm wondering why this needs a sign at all? This is not wayfinding, uh, everyone for blocks around can see that this is the athletic dome. Uh, it has more than enough, as the folks have pointed out, there's more than enough signage for folks to know that this is Adrian College. And that that's a dome. Uh, this strikes me just as, as promoting. Uh, it, it doesn't serve any purpose other than that. I guess that's not a question, Frank, but it's, but it doesn't serve a purpose other than, other than.
Well, we, we feel, again. Understood. So as I mentioned in the, sort of, as I was introducing the variance, that it is a way to orient the public, the campus, to the actual entrance, which was a point of concern that was raised by the community, by the city of Adrian, in terms of people with wayfinding orienting them to the front of this facility. I mean, I mean, there, there, and again, we're, we're, this is a college campus, so I understand that there's, there are differences from a campus and a, and a, and a college than it would be from a, a, a business, and so.
You know, part, part of my issue there too, is when we looked at this from a site plan review of perspective on the planning commission a year ago, a year ago, March, I think it was. Uh, we, we asked about parking, uh, where's, where is everyone going to park? And there was some concern that there was sufficient parking. And at the time, I, I don't think it was you, but whoever was speaking on behalf of the college said, you don't need to worry about that, this is strictly for students and athletes on campus, this is not a public facility. So I then say, why do we need to let the public know where it is? When one would presume that students on campus and athletes would know where it is and how to get in.
Uh, uh, I, I understand that rationale. And, and we just know the reality is on a college campus, whether we want to retain campus activities only to students, faculty and staff, the general public for multitude of purposes and reasons.
Do we need to revisit the parking issue?
That's not why we're, we're here, just for the signage.
Yeah, if it's open to the public, then maybe we need to revisit the parking capacity.
Question, trying to move this along, I guess. Would the college be receptive to one sign and a smaller sign?
You know, I think the college is going, well, I shouldn't say I think, the college is going to adhere to whatever it's allowed to do and required to do. Um, but we're here for, for this purpose and that's.
Commissioners, questions, any more questions? I know, gentlemen, and I know we've done a public hearing, but if you have something quickly, I'll let you fire it at us. I know.
Getting into debate with Mr. Rebar, but each.
That's why I want.
This says right here, a bulldog and Adrian College on it, maybe that's part of the logo, but it's, you asked, is it saying Adrian College?
I believe the question, I believe the question was whether the building, the signage on the building said Adrian College.
Then Mr. Jacobitz asked, or somebody asked if they'll look, this will have Adrian College on it, and it's right here in the picture, that's my only point. Thank you for allowing me to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I apologize for confusion, that Adrian College is part of that logo officially, so it's the, the image with the writing, that's what I was referencing.
Okay, hearing no more comments, commissioners, we have some finding of fact we need to look at. And the finding of fact for a sign variance is different than our other findings when we're doing different variances, so we have four items to go down through. And please, uh, feel free to jump in and help me out as we go through these. Number one, the alleged practical difficulties are exceptional and peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance resulting from conditions which do not generally exist throughout this city. Now, that's kind of a tough thing to apply to a sign, but the conditions.
Because usually when we've granted a sign variance, it's been based on like some topography.
Right. So other than, you know, distance from the road, that's the only possible thing, but I'm not sure that meets into the criteria.
Yeah.
I will find no for number one unless somebody else has a reason to convince me otherwise.
Right.
Okay. Pardon? Number two, the alleged practical difficulties which will result from the failure to grant a variance include substantially more than mere inconvenience or inability to obtain a higher financial return or both. I don't know how if it fits into any financial return. But whether, uh, convenience for people being able to identify it? Possibly.
But it's.
Feelings, thoughts?
Well, since we already answered no to one of the four.
Right.
Anything else going through the, the next three of them is superfluous.
But we should go through them.
Okay, okay.
Um, I've, if we.
Basically, what, what we're getting at is that the last item on this list that, that we have is that the finding of fact set forth in this section shall be made by the zoning board of appeals. We should not empower, uh, grant a variance without affirmative finding of action on all of the previous subsection. So right away when we say no to number one, we've put ourselves where we cannot approve that. It's my understanding.
And I don't see how we can say yes to number three. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on two, we can say yes to two if that.
Yeah, so basically, we, we, we were done right at the beginning with a no for number one, and like you say, number three would be uh, about justice and the compete, uh, I'll read number three just so everyone knows. Allowing variance will result in substantial justice being done concerning the public benefit intended to be secured by this article. The practical difficulties that will be, uh, suffered by the failure of the zoning board of appeals to grant a variance and the rights of those whose property would be affected by the, uh, allowance of the variance. So we would find that a no for that also. So based on finding, no finding for number two, excuse me, number one and number three, we are not able to consider granting a variance.
Based on those findings of facts and the statements that I made earlier, I would make the motion that the request for variance be denied.
Support. Support.
We have a motion and we have support, do we have questions on the motion? So you know, question for the commissioners, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Jacobitz?
Uh, affirmative.
Bealy? The vote is affirmative vote to deny.
Yes, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Bealy?
Support.
Miller?
Support.
Kolesky?
Support.
Berthold?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, Mr. Burke. So this variance, particular variance request has been denied. Old business.
Good, since we're, can, can I ask a clarifying question?
Ask away.
It's 300 feet per wall, is that correct? So if they do put those words up on the thing, that shrinks.
It's great, yeah, it's three, it's a maximum of 300, I believe it's 1.5 per square foot.
Okay.
The distance, the biggest they could have is 300.
And that will include the words over the doorway?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you know, old business, uh, future business. Uh, one of the things that was brought to my attention is that, uh, all of us sitting up here tonight, terms expire at the same time at the end of this year. Uh, I'm not sure what all the clerical work that happened over the last few years of that, but, uh, we need to be thinking about whether you want to continue in this position, not looking for a decision tonight by any means. But to, uh, let Jeremiah know, uh, if you are interested, you know, somewhere by, you know, late summer, early fall, so if we do have to be looking for new members, we can have time to do that. Uh, we're all here until the end of the year anyway, so, uh, just be thinking about it and we'll go from there.
Mike, I have a question, in the past, we've had to reapply, do we still have to do that if we're interested?
I'm not sure how that's all being handled, I know we had to reapply at one time and then there was other times we just said we want to be again and kept going. So I don't know, I guess we'll wait for the, uh, interim city manager to make those decisions.
The, the mayor is saying reapply, at least I think that's what I read her lips to say.
Okay, okay.
The mayor has spoken.
Right.
Okay. I don't know if we have any committee reports or staff reports. Okay? And the last item of business is once again, we could take, accept public comments. Does anybody in the audience have a public comment they'd like to make to this board at this time? Anybody online for public comment?
Can I speak, sorry, I just thought about this, um, the mayor, city of Adrian. The reason why we're asking you to reapply is just so that the commission, you know, we already know there's going to be one seat up and for, I mean, there's three seats up this time um, on the commission, but we know that one is not seeking reelection, so we know we'll have a new person in there. But one of the things that came up in the past is that they just like to be able to look at who they are appointing or reappointing, especially if they're new, or they don't know who this person is, and just to look at their qualifications or whatever you put on those applications, so that is the reasoning for that ask for reapplying. It's just to keep the, the city commission informed on who, who is sitting on these commissions and, and why they are interested in it and, and a little bit of their background, so I just wanted to explain that.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I don't exactly know how all the verbiage is and all this as far as terms and stuff, but should we look at maybe not having everybody for three-year appointments?
Yes, yes, we will look at that as well, so, yes, I agree, thanks.
Any, any other comments? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting of the zoning board of appeals and planning commission will be starting in a few minutes, thank you.
I'll see you at the region.
Folks, we will call to order the May 6th meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Uh, first item on the agenda is a roll call.
Yes, sir. Jacobitz?
Present.
Love?
Present.
Weatherby?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Watson?
Present.
Taylor?
Present.
Gauss?
Present.
Give it for him.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of the minutes from our April meeting, commissioners, you all have copies of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them, are there any additions or corrections to the April minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Move approval is written, support.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
The April minutes are approved. And the next item on our agenda is case number 2506. A look at facade improvements for 109 West Mami Street. Is there someone in the audience to address that particular matter? Sir, is it you? If you'd come forward and give us your name and, uh, tell us where you live and very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
Uh, my name is Zach Bach, I live at 14140 Church Road in Hudson.
Oh, okay.
Um, I own 109 West Mami, I am asking for a change in the facade to move the current inset of the storefront doors to, uh, level with the sidewalk.
So flush.
Flush, there we go.
Okay, uh, we have the illustration and we have a photograph of what I presume is a similar, is that Tecumseh Brewing, is that what it is?
Yes.
A similar setup to that?
Correct.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, it's got nothing to do with the facade, but do you have specific plans for this building?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay, so how do we know that the garage doors are going to be appropriate for whatever business is going to be there?
The garage doors can be used as both windows as well as a door.
Okay, okay. Can you tell me about the, the awnings that are showing on here, are they, how far do they project?
I believe they would project out roughly three feet.
Oh, okay, so it's not some big side covering thing, it's similar.
It'd be very similar to any other downtown buildings awning.
Okay, okay. Commissioners? Questions? Other questions?
Is the finished floor inside the same as the sidewalk or will there be a step up?
Uh, right now, the flooring is level throughout, um, so it would be the exact same.
No, so you walk off of the sidewalk straight in?
Correct.
There's no step?
Nope.
Okay.
Other questions for the petition? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody in the audience either in, present, uh, in the room or online that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular request? Okay, hearing none. Folks, I would say that certainly is an improvement over what is on that building at this time. If there's no discussion, additional discussion, we would entertain a motion to approve and accept the motion, accept the motion the staff has to adopt.
So moved, support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Love and support from Commissioner Taylor. Oh, okay, there's not a. Okay.
Move to approve the recommended facade improvements. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support for approving the changes in the facade down in, about, at 109 West Mami Street. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, we can have a roll call.
Gauss?
Yes.
Watson? Approved. Weatherby?
Support.
Love?
Yes.
Johnson?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing it, thanks.
Me too.
It's, it's, it's been an eyesore for a long time.
Part of it. Thank you.
Um, next item is case number 2515, 1360 South Main Street, a zoning exception and site plan review. And let's see. Get to that part of my packet here. Which is Culvers. Mister Thomas, if you don't mind.
How are you doing, everybody?
Good.
Good.
And identify yourself for our record and very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
Yeah, my name is David Thomas. I'm an operator of Culvers here in Adrian. Um, I live at twenty-one forty-eight Homestead Lane. Um, what we're proposing is to obviously with. Um, people going to more eating out and actually on the go, we are trying to increase efficiency in our drive through by uh. Adding a second lane to reduce um some of the stacking problems that are occurring. In our drive through.
And my understanding from visiting the site, uh, that the second lane is going to go kind of around behind the. The dumpster enclosure.
Yes, and so as you pull in, um, you'll be about two cars behind our our first order post and it'll allow you to. Swift off to the right around the island and there will be another order point right there pretty much parallel with the order point that we have there already. And so it will be about twenty-four feet apart.
And the cars will merge back into one lane.
And they merge right back into one lane and they will check out at the one, our single drive-through window.
Questions for Mister Thomas?
Are you sure, Don? No questions?
Well, we could ask you.
My my one question is.
Yep.
Is increasing. Order efficiency going to pile up the weight beyond that first drive-through window that at times already meets capacity?
Uh, no, because obviously we'll be increasing staffing to be able to take care of our guests.
Any other questions for Mister Thomas? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Folks, as you may recall, we just recently approved a zoning change for this. This uh, for some reason, this property. Was zoned such that it didn't permit drive-throughs at all, uh, even though it had one for how long?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. Uh. So if if there's no other questions for Mister Thomas, is there anyone in the audience either present or online that wishes to address the planning commission? On this matter? Um, staff, were there any concerns? From like. Engineering or?
No, no one had concerns. They're not. They're not increasing impervious.
Surface or anything like that?
No, not going over any water lines, not doing anything that should change substantially change a site in a way that anyone has a problem.
Okay. And there is a creep that's going out, but uh Mister Thomas said to me that they're gonna. Replace that with some other shrubs. Yeah, okay. Um, with that being said, then if uh if we would so choose, we could approve both the site plan and the zoning exception permit. And we would entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution that staff has provided.
Move to adopt the resolution that staff has provided. Support.
We have a motion and support. If you could have, is there any additional discussion?
Watson?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Weatherby?
Support.
Gauss?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Skobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item twenty-five, case number twenty-five sixteen uh. For ten thirty-two South Main Street. This is a zoning exception uh application and a site plan review. Uh, for a marijuana dispensary and is there someone here to just to. Present on that. Sir, if you'd give us your name and where you live and tell us what you'd like to say.
Sure, uh, Rob Zora on behalf of LJ Holdings eight, um, Troy, eleven hundred West Maple Road, Troy, Michigan. Um, this is a uh an application for site plan approval. Um, for as as you mentioned, it's an adult use retail. Uh cannabis retail facility. Um, my understanding is that this this particular site plan was approved. This had to be years and years.
At least at least once before.
Yeah, once before, uh, it I want to say at least two years ago. Um, that was before my time, but um. Uh, I am sort of familiar with the history. Um, I I know that there was one question from the commission which was with respect to the uh the landscape plan. Um, to make sure that there were no invasive species being planted and I believe uh my office submitted an updated landscape plan recently.
Um, yeah, so that was requested by me and they did and that's.
Okay, yeah.
So you're fine.
Um, and so uh otherwise, I believe as far as I understand, the site plan remains the same as it was originally and. Um, no changes at this time other than the updated landscape plan.
Okay, well, thank you. Miss, any questions for Mister Zora? From the commission? Again, this is a both a site plan and a zoning exception permit that we have approved in the past.
Move to approve.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any additional discussion?
Yes. Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Support.
Gauss?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Skobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We don't have any old business, but I would like us to take a few minutes and discuss the zoning ordinance rewrite. The thing, the project that won't, the the project that won't die, uh huh. Um, I I presume you all got my email from what Fridays ago that included a copy of that uh of the. The most recent copy of the draft. Um, I haven't gotten any feedback from anyone. Uh, did we all have a chance to look at that?
Yep.
Okay, um. And what do we think?
Yeah, well.
We'll start there.
Yeah, absolutely. I would agree with that.
Well, what what one of my first questions, speaking of which then. Uh, two questions, one about uh that relates to the schedule for moving forward. Um. More specifically to this, is it ready to send it to the city commission, not as approved from us or for their approval? But for their consideration and feedback, because I don't want to get to the point where two months from now, we send it to the city commission and then we get feedback. Uh, uh negative feedback from them. So I'm suggesting that we send it now. Or in the next day or two, send a copy of it to the city commission.
The whole document.
The whole doc, the entire document. And uh probably along with, in fact, not probably, along with. Those attachments that that they kind of outlined what the differences are.
Yes.
And that too, yes. Okay.
I think that's a good idea. The mayor's here. We could ask her too, but um, because she like more important than me. Um, just just saying. Um, I think I think we should do that, but. Be prepared for questions and propose changes. So there there you may get some feedback that.
Well, that's the whole point.
Okay.
That being the whole point. I I'd rather get it now than later.
You know, hopefully, if you send it out in the next couple of days, you're gonna have feedback by our next meeting. I mean, you make that.
You you say that, Gordon, as if you've already gotten feedback from people, is that?
I'm sorry?
You say that as if you've already gotten some feed.
No, 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 I haven't. I have not.
Oh, okay.
I've not. I mean, uh, they're actually, Mike did a great job in presenting it uh at our last meeting, not Monday, a week ago or two weeks ago. Um, so but there will be questions. There there's no doubt. Now, that doesn't mean there'll be changes, but there will be questions.
That presumes that anyone actually looks at it.
Yeah, there all there's that.
Um, what I just handed out is a tentative schedule. You know, I had in in the email that I sent out a couple of Fridays ago, I had. Included a tentative schedule. I have rethought that a little bit and this is an update to that, uh, maybe somewhat less tentative. Um, starting with today, uh, feedback from the planning commission, uh, which seems to be just either everyone's okay with it. Or we didn't find a whole lot wrong with it. Um, in the next few days, send the draft copy via Vince and Lisa to get to the city commission. Uh, or do you want us to do it directly? It should probably come from your office, Vince, you think?
Yes.
Okay, then then you already have a copy of it. In fact, maybe send them everything I just sent you last week, maybe other than the cover letter kind of thing. Um, then after we get feedback there, uh, again, a discussion at our May meeting. Which is not.
June meeting.
Or or or, yes, our June meeting. Um, uh, for again, discussion, I have two, just these are very tentative dates. These are the, I just pulled these out of the air, but for a. Tendative dates for public open houses, that would be Tuesday, July fifteenth and Thursday, July twenty-fourth, probably here. I would, on one hand, I would prefer to have done those a lot sooner, but I'm gonna be out of the country from like June. Eleventh through the end of the month. And unless somebody else wants to step up. And say we're willing to run that.
I I move that you come back.
Not not gonna happen, yeah. Um.
I'm I'm gonna be gone um on July fifteenth.
Okay, but that's why we're having two.
Well, yeah, that's fine. Um, I'll have some other comments in a minute.
Okay, and I would hope that there would be planning commissioners at one or both of those, at least not necessarily everybody, but a few of us would would be at those. Uh, then at our August meeting, have it have it on our agenda for a public hearing and action. Uh, supposedly approval and our action would be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission. Uh, and if they find it acceptable, they could have a first reading at their August eighteenth meeting and a second reading at their September second meeting. And that would get it done before we're too far into the fall. I'm sorry? Oh, okay, okay. Gordon, you had something to say?
Yeah, I do. Um. When we look at um. Tuesday, June third, assuming that we stick with that, well, first of all, let's back up. May nineteenth revised discussion, that's gonna be a special meeting, correct?
No, that was just, that was my target for getting it out to you.
Oh, okay.
That was not a meeting at all. That was just a target for.
Got it.
Based on, based on getting feedback from planning commission and from the city commission, making any. Necessary revisions and then getting the revised copy back to the planning commission by that date.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, Tuesday, Tuesday, June th- June third, uh, assuming that. We have a final draft, we review it, discussion, we kind of stamp it.
Yep.
And um, after that and prior to the public open houses. Uh, and obviously the the things that are, I strongly suggest that we post the ordinance on the city website.
Yes.
For people to be able to review and, you know.
Absolutely.
Come to the open houses prepared to ask questions. You know, we get very poor attendance to every open house that we have. But if we promote this, there's gonna be people that wanna know and and putting it on the city website.
Now, I want it to be made clear too that this is a working, even when we stamp it.
Yes.
No, no, I get I get it. And I but I want, I want on the record, us here, the mayor, everybody to understand that it's, we don't need to. Nitpick this with a fine tooth comb before we pass it. We need to make sure it's in a really good spot.
Right.
And then, you know, six months down or six weeks down or six days down the road.
There's gonna be amendments.
We have to adjust.
Absolutely, that and I I understand that.
Made very clear because we could nitpick through this for another year, six years.
But I I think it's important that we give the public an opportunity to look at the documents before they're asked to come in and comment on them.
One of the uh things that I've been talking to both Lisa and Jeremiah about is of. Noticing noticing that the open houses with something in the water bills. Uh, and having both of the, we already have the current ordinances linked on the website, but then also putting this. Link on the website with with a, you know, kind of cross reference, so you could, anyone that's interested could see them both. Uh, what else did we discuss? Uh, the other thing that we are researching, because we don't have a definitive answer on this. Is what kind of legal notice do we have to get give for a massive change like this? You know, if 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 we're doing a single property rezoning. We notice the.
You're not being clear, because we're gonna rezone lots of properties. Yeah, but I'm just saying for everybody, you kind of went off on.
So.
Yeah, so the rezoning of properties is different than.
And and so we, we're not quite sure, we're gonna have to ask uh either the attorney or maybe uh M and L, M and L or somebody like that as to what is our obligation? In terms of legal notice.
Right, well, which raises another question I've been thinking about. Um, and not that I wanna run up Angie's bill with the city attorney, but should the city attorney have? We should run, probably pass this through the city attorney.
Oh, in in fact.
I would expect you.
When when we said it, when I send the copy of, and sends the copy to. It's going to him as well.
Okay.
In fact, we had that discussion when I was here at the podium.
You ought to be on the city commission instead of me.
No, no, one meeting a month is enough, yes.
Jeremiah, do you have something to say?
So I have done extensive research at this point and I'm getting close to an answer on what we need to, I I know what we need to do. Per this ordinance, the zoning amendment to properties is going to be a zoning designation change. It is unclear to me whether I have to notice every single property, which will be extremely painful on our wallet. Um, but I believe there is a way that it says we can do this. Where it just notifies them what's happening and they will go to our website, but I will get that figured out. Secondly, they do recommend that we have the city attorney read it, but I would say because it's working, we should have him read it. Prior to going to city commission instead of multiple times, because then we are just billing hours for no. Right. Regular purpose, but it it does suggest that we do that prior.
So you're saying we should give it to Burke first before we give it to the city?
Before we, before we do a full um public hearing on this, we should let him read it once.
Yeah.
Um, and then if they make changes, we should have him read it again.
Okay.
Gotcha.
We can send it to them at the same time.
That, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But but the one that he currently has and and told the city commission he has is so far off base from this one that there's no point in.
He's got the originals.
Yes, that that is a monster.
Vince, we will send it both to the city commission and to the attorney. Together, all the same time. Okay?
And I guess, my guess is that that Burke will share it with Fred Lucas, who has extensive experience in zoning.
Yep. Mister Taylor?
Are you accepting comments or review?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make them short if I can.
Please.
I did submit quite a few last time around and.
And I.
Thanks to the three of you. Just a second, I'm gonna thank you. I'm gonna thank you publicly for incorporating all that. Every one of them, I appreciate it, except the ones that didn't make a lot of sense. Um, I I do wanna point out that a couple of things, uh. In the definitions, we keep saying that marijuana provisioning center are for registered qualifying patients. I think we need to change that. Because it's it's not that way anymore, okay? And also, under public utility, we list telegraph. Uh, I'm not sure that anybody does telegraph anymore. But that's just a. Um, couple of questions, I'm wondering why, um. Well, first of all, I'm not sure why we ever needed to have the tree preservation standards in the current code.
We.
Is that why we got rid of it this time around?
Yes.
Okay.
And it also was pretty onerous for us.
Onerous for sure, okay, so make sure of that. Um, and hats off to you for adding. New things on the sign section, uh, you know, uh, new definitions, new. Outlining things like the auto wash and bed and breakfast and all that. Um, and adding adaptive reuse, which I know we all really. But we need that, anyway, appreciate that. Um. And referencing historic history too. We, we've had this discussion and I don't know where this appears in the code. About the three hundred foot notification on zoning changes, you know how this kind of popped up? When we did the P U D at Bixby? Nobody was within three hundred feet of there. It was actually living, breathing in that area, so I just wonder if we. Is that in the code right now or is that?
So that's a state statute. That's the zoning enabling legislation, which requires three hundred feet from the parcel. Um, I do that through a buffer in in our mapping system. The. Current zoning ordinance is actually incorrect and it says that we are supposed to do it um. Less than fifteen days. Um, before the meeting, when the statute is. At least fifteen days. So our current zoning ordinance is actually completely wrong.
Yeah.
Um, and I can always cite that to you guys. It's. It's an awkward thing, but it is three hundred feet. Um, I, even if they have the tiniest sliver within that buffer, I still send them a notice. I send it to. Um, who the property owner is and if there is a tenant, they get it there. It's, it specifically spells out what I have to send them. You know, verbatim, basically.
Are you suggesting we go farther, Don? Is that, can we go farther or no?
I'm I'm wondering if we.
We we can go farther, but we have to stick to at least that minimum.
Yeah.
And on occasion, I think we have gone farther about terribly.
I think there may be unusual circumstances where there's nobody within three hundred feet. Maybe if we go to three. I'm just saying, that's that's what came up at at Bixby, so. Maybe we can, I just look at each case independently, so.
I believe that we recently did that with the public notice notices for the zoning board of appeals on the college issue. We expanded. And went further um out so that it would, because that Charles Street address would not have caught all the people who were here tonight to speak on that issue. You had to, you had to expand it further than the three hundred feet, which was the right thing to do, in my opinion.
Anything else?
You done, Don? You got anymore?
Listen.
I thought you, I'm not. I thought, I'm not being smart. I thought you had a long list over there. I thought you were gonna go on for a while.
Well, I do, but I, I incorporated about seven of them into one.
Oh, okay.
May I get, will you send me your written?
I will.
Okay.
I will. But, I mean, some of those were, one sentence were, there's some, still some missing words.
Oh.
I didn't, you know.
Okay.
But.
Anything else, folks?
You missed your calling as an editor of a book editor.
Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Is there anything else that we needed to say about the ordinance? Yeah, we, we, we have something to show for it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on any other topic? Madam Mayor.
Hello, Mayor Heath, City of Adrian. Um, just something, as you look at your timeline and who knows if it will really happen this way, but we just had the search update last night from the, um, company that we have contracted with. And right now their goal is to have the candidate for the, the candidate for, um, the administrator possibly on the 18th of August, which you said that date and it immediately alerted in my brain because I know I heard that last night as well. So we'll just see as we get closer to that, that that date, I would just try to caution you to maybe stay, if that does align that way, to not have it on the same night. Um, I just think that and I know that. I just wanted to make you aware that that was. Um, the other thing is when you're doing, when you are engaging with the public, you know, I've looked at that document. I know I haven't looked at the, the rewrite, but it's very overwhelming and it's very cumbersome. If, you know, what they really care about as public, um, because it's what I care about are what are the changes? What's different than what was before? Um, so what are those changes? So I think if you just highlight what those changes are, the other thing that, um, your, the graph that you've worked on, that color coded graph that we, we got a glimpse of.
Spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet, thank you. I, I only got a glimpse of it, sorry, was spectacular because that is a very visual tactile thing that they can look at and be like, okay, I'm in this zone. This is what I can do. This is what I cannot. I feel like those are the things that really could be highlighted in those meetings more than like a huge document of the whole ordinance.
You will get that. That's all done already. You have, just haven't got it yet.
Yeah, oh, no, I know. I was very excited. I, I saw it was on, I saw it was in the works and I just want to say thank you so much for all the work you've put into that. Um, I know it's been many, 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 many hours and, um, you know, and, and just seeing those, you know, we, we saw glimpses of it on the, on the computer screen and just seeing that and knowing that those documents are out there because that is what is really most needed when it comes to the zoning changes and just, that's what people are going to really care about it. You know, it's what we care about more and, and, and probably even in sending that onto the commission, you know, if the changes are on, in, in there as well, that document right there, you know, so that we can look at that as well, because it is cumbersome, cumbersome as you keep trying to read through that document on that, it's crazy. So, um, it, it can get to be a lot, but, um, I, I really think just if, if those changes are, you know, noted, but I, I think this is great. It's really well needed. Um, you know, it's something that a lot of people, you see it all the time here, that people do things and they don't know that they weren't supposed to do that because they don't know what the zoning ordinances are for their, for their area. Yes. I'm realizing that, but at least it might enlighten them. So, um, thank you so much for all the, the work you've put into it. I know several of you have basically made this a job and so, um, I greatly, greatly appreciate it and I just think this is very well needed and, and it's very timely and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
I would just like to make one other comment. There, and you two, the three of us looked at the map. There's not many if not any, changes from one district to another. It may be instead of having four R districts, we're having three. And somebody told me go from a four to a one, which doesn't have much change.
People will not find.
They're not gonna get something in the mail or find like, oh my goodness, now I'm in something else that.
People will find that the, what they can do with their property will not change.